Welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners regular agenda session for November the fourteenth, twenty twenty-four. It's from one o'clock. For, we welcome our Assistant County Attorney. Our County Attorney has some family issues this morning, and so he couldn't be here. Thank you, Mr. Hasty, for being here instead. So, Mr. Rob Hasty is here today, so thank you so very much. All right, with that, we'll have Ms. Stewart do the invocation and the pledge of course.
God, we thank you for this day. We thank you, God, for your goodness and your mercy and your compassion, God. We thank you, God, for the opportunity to come and do the work of the citizens here in Cumberland County. We pray, God, that you would bless each and every citizen, God. We pray for each and every commissioner. Pray that you give us insight, God, and that you allow us, God, to think out of the box when necessary. And, God, I pray for those who are coming on board. I pray for Henry and Kirk and Paul and God. I pray, God, that you would give them insight as well, God. And, God, I know they're gonna miss me, Jimmy and Michael. So, pray, God, that you would comfort them. As the world will look totally different and there will be a complete void, however, we trust that you will do what's necessary to be done, in Jesus' name, amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic over which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, that's right, you did say that, didn't you? We have the approval of the agenda. Mr. Manager, is anything to add or take away from the agenda?
Yes, Chairman Adams, there was one item, and I think this is gonna go, I guess, to the meeting on Monday, Hillside Cemetery.
Uh, no, we'll do that today.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll do it today.
Uh, Hillside Cemetery, that would be item two, you know.
Two M.
And then, I think, update to the Commissioner bio format on the county website should be pulled.
Yes.
And those are all the changes to the agenda.
All righty. With those changes, I'll take a motion to approve.
Some second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor, that is unanimous. All right, that will take us to the consideration of the agenda item, extension of time with the Martin Luther King Junior Committee. I will tell you, did I, uh, did I do that? For everybody's, that's, yeah, okay, but, as you are aware, we approved a amount for Martin Luther King and the Martin Luther King Park. Part of that was that they had to have the design and have it done and implemented by November the first. They had issues back and forth because they had the, some wetlands over there, they had where they were gonna put it, whether it was in an easement, and so they went back and forth with the city. They've worked all of that out. They've sent a letter to the Chairman, asked that that amount be, the time be extended for them to be able to complete that project. So, I would, anybody got any questions?
Twelve months.
Twelve months, is that okay? So, if I can get a motion to that?
Motion to approve, twelve months.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor, that is unanimous. All right, the request to contract for continued security service, Mr. Manager.
Yes, Brenda Jackson, Reed Jackson, Social Services Director, will present this item and answer any questions you may have. Good afternoon, Brenda.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Welcome to our new Commissioners that will be coming in, and of course, Commissioner Stewart holds a special place in our heart over at Social Services, is serving on the Social Services Board. This afternoon, I wanted to share with you and ask your request for your consent agenda item on Monday, continuation of our security contract. We have one sheriff deputy that provides support for security at our main building. Several years ago, Commissioners, you approved for us to expand security services to contracted armed security. We have three armed security guards at the main building on Ramsey Street, and we have one armed security guard at the Family Resource Center in Spring Lake. And that security guard also supports social services as well as public health and the public library. Every three years, we have to look at that contract process, and we went through a formal bid process, and we do reflect a change in the current vendor from North State to Witherspoon Security. And we're asking for your consideration of Witherspoon Security as our new contract vendor starting January first, with the option of a three-year, two-year contract extension. And we're asking for that item to be considered for your consent agenda on Monday, November the eighteenth.
Does anybody have any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to do services with Witherspoon Security starting in January first with the option for two years.
Some move.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor, and we move that to the consent agenda. Thank you. Bid award for the Assembly Court, yes, you're welcome, Convenience Center and Recycling Facility, the Phase One Construction. Mr. Manager.
Yes, Amanda Lee, General Manager for Natural Resources, will present this item.
Did you say another name?
Amanda Lee, oh, oh, what's that?
I took back my maiden name.
Oh, I thought you got me.
I thought I said she got me. Oh, no, she smiled and just said, "Baby."
I'm happy, I'm happy about it.
I'm not sure which one it is. I can do the Lee easier, though, so that I can.
Okay, that's, it's easier to say.
There you go. Go ahead, Miss Amanda.
So, what I'd like to talk to you about.
I'm sorry, Miss Lee, okay.
Is Assembly Court. Assembly Court will replace the McCauley site. It is a three-acre site beside Fayetteville Steel. This site will be designed with our modern standards for a container site. We're bidding the first phase of construction, which will include site work. We will also come back with a second phase that will include a permanent structure there. We had to comply with the restrictive covenants for the industrial park, so that will come as the second phase, so that we're asked, so we're asking for permission to put this construction contract on the next board meeting.
All right, if I can get a motion, any questions?
Yes, quickly, when do you anticipate the site being available?
Um, let's see, I would say in the next eighteen to twenty-four months.
It takes, it takes that long to build a site?
Well, it's not really the site, it's going to be the construction of the building. So, what we're trying to do now is, we're working through the architectural design of the building while we do the site work.
So, we won't open the site until it's complete?
Until it's complete.
Okay.
Because we have to comply with the restrictive covenants, which requires a, no wood structures. We'll also have a bathroom in this facility.
Okay, right. And McCauley Site will still be?
In operation.
Okay, thank you.
If I can get a, some motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous. That takes us to the bid award for Wells Package One, the Graves Creek Phase One Construction.
Amanda Lee will handle this item also.
Okay, so, as you're well aware, we have been working on test wells in the Graves Creek area. We are finding that our greatest yields is in the southern part of Graves Creek. We've prepared a contract with four test well sites, or four larger well sites. With the, with the southern area, we're getting yields to the point that we need larger wells to determine aquifer characteristics, and the intent is to look at these wells in the southern portion of the county, and they will serve, potentially be the foundation for the Cedar Creek Water District.
So, in your, I think people have gotten confused on, and I'm glad you brought that, people have gotten confused as to what this serves, so, for our medicine, for everybody. These wells, you know, we know that we, working with PWC for the Graves Creek area, but the Cedar Creek area has contamination, actually, it's all the way over to Stedman, outside of their system, too, so we've got to build out a system, and, so, I take a motion for the bid award.
Question?
Yes.
You said we gotta build out. Said that, that's fine, you said we gotta build out.
Yes, so what you got is, the Graves Creek is with PWC, and that's the whole system. This is for Cedar Creek, and so you're gonna have to build out a system to get over to Cedar Creek, because PWC is not. What you have over in Cedar Creek, which is one of the problems we had in Graves Creek when we first started, is you've gotta have to worry about the density and the number of the houses and the number of, being able, I learned more about water flushing and all of that. Cedar Creek just there, so far apart, and the density is just not there, and, you know, one of the things is that's part of Jemaine's reason, is taking his head, too, is one of the problems with that. So, these test wells, and these wells are to bring that water over to Cedar Creek, who those folk have just as much contamination as anyone.
To bring what water?
From the wells. It's different than the PWC.
So, you're testing them to see how much contamination there is?
No, to, we're dealing in these wells to get down to the aquifer, to have clean water to provide to the folk in Cedar Creek. All right, and ones for Graves Creek will be served by PWC. That was the, what we bid on. If I can get a motion to approve the bid award for the Wells Package One, the Graves Creek Phase One Construction, which does Cedar Creek.
Some move, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second that.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor? All right, that's, no, she did, oh, you did. Okay, all right, we move that to the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, Amanda.
That's? That's Miss Lee.
Miss Lee. It's a long time coming.
No, no, the wells, the wells. How you say something there? The bid award for the Sheriff's Indoor Training. Mr. Manager.
Jemaine Walker, Director of Engineering Infrastructure, will present this item and answer any questions you have. And if anyone hasn't been to the training facility, shooting facility they have at the Sheriff's Department, I suggest you go before we make this change.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon. County Commissioners. This project before you, it's an FY twenty-five project to modernize and upgrade the range facility at the Sheriff's Training Center, included in the scope of work for the two separate bays, fourteen total of firing lanes. It's not only gonna be pistol, but also rifle rated, fixed position shooting, they'll be able to, to fire from a multitude of static firing positions. Also includes LED white lighting and police lighting on the targets, three hundred and sixty-degree action targeting, ballistic baffling lighting, additional sound absorption paneling, and controls. And so, this project was funded FY twenty-five, there's sufficient funding to complete the project. The lowest responsive responsible bid, range systems at three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and eleven dollars, and what staff is recommending that the board accept range systems as the lowest responsive responsible bid, and move this item forward to the November eighteenth, twenty twenty-four regular meeting as a consent item, and once the contract approved, completes finance audit and legal sufficiency, allow the Chairman of the Board of Commissioners to endorse the contract.
Any questions? If not, I'll take a motion to approve range system for the indoor training range upgrade project.
Motion to approve, second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor, that will move to the consent agenda.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Recommendation for the use of opioid settlement funds and local spending authorization resolution and associated grant project.
Yes, Dr. Green, Health, Public Health Director, will present this item, answer any questions you have, and she's gonna provide information on option A and B.
Yeah, no, this is the new award winner for our heroes.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, I really appreciate that. So, I'm here today to make some recommendations around the use of our opioid settlement dollars, and I do wanna correct one piece, which we'll talk about in the slide presentation. It's Budget Ordinance Amendment, BR twenty-five, one-two-five-zero, and it's not a grant project budget ordinance, just a budget ordinance. So, for, I know that many of the Commissioners have seen this already, but for the public, just a little bit, quick background about the settlement dollars, these dollars are coming to Cumberland County. They're governed by a memorandum of agreement between the state and local governments that dictate about how these dollars can be utilized. Cumberland County government is receiving a little bit over three-point-six million dollars, and those dollars have to be authorized by two things, budget revision and.
Wait a minute, go back, that's thirty-one million, not three.
Sorry, what did I say?
You said three million.
That's all. Thirty-one million dollars, thirty-one point-six million dollars. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And the, it requires two things, a budget revision and a resolution, a local spending authorization resolution. We have options to do Option A and Option B strategies, which we'll talk about today. Historically, for the first two years of our settlement dollars, we've only done Option A strategies, and today we are presenting both Option A and Option B strategies. I'll note that in order to implement Option B strategies, it requires approval and a strategic planning report from, approval of our strategic planning report from the state. So, I'll talk about that when it comes up in our recommendations in just a moment. So, we did, before we brought the recommendations to you, we did a feedback process, so recall in twenty twenty-two, we did a rapid needs assessment, and then we updated that. This fall, we did our needs assessment, which include four community town halls, a community survey, ongoing feedback through many of our community partner meetings, feedback from our Cumberland Fayetteville Opioid Response Team and our Board of Health. And so, we took the results of those feedback to develop these recommendations. Our twenty twenty-two projects are still being implemented, but we have some of those that are winding down, and we want to make some recommendations for the next sort of tranche of dollars.
Dr. Green, can I say, just so the Commissioners know, we went to these town hall meetings. I went to the one out in Spring Lake, and I think we had one person there besides staff, we had more staff. But I would tell you that, and I think Assistant Manager Skeens would tell you, to Dr. Green's credit, one person in this room, she presented it like it was fifty people in this room. She asked questions and did everything like it was fifty people in this room. And so, I wanna commend her, because that gentleman, he deserved as much as everybody else.
That's right.
And whether it was one or whether it was fifty, thank you for doing that. We had much better turnout, Eastover, I did not make it to the Hope Mills one, but Eastover had a, quite a big turnout and a lot of input, but thank you.
Yes.
They laughed at me the whole time, and I put my dots up.
Yes, so, we did these four town halls. Spring Lake, we need some more engagement there, but Eastover, Hope Mills, and our one at the library was very well attended.
I went to the library, too.
So, the, we did, just a quick snapshot of the feedback, we did a community survey in these town halls. The community survey, the top recommendation was around evidence-based addiction treatment, and then recovery support services, which might include housing, jobs, or support for job opportunities, and employment services. Everything had support, for sure, but we, those were the top two, the top two. And then, we did these community town halls, as Commissioner Adams alluded to, we did good old-fashioned chart paper on the wall, put dots up and vote. The top strategy there was recovery housing, and then the other things fell in line sort of equally, prevention education, reenactment programs, addiction treatment, and, and naloxone distribution, and sort of the range of services. So, everybody said, we need a range of services, and so you'll see that reflected in the survey results. So, in summary, weed, housing came up again and again during our, during our community meetings, making sure that we are coordinating our services, so that we're not duplicating services that are existing and that all of our agencies are working together, really leaning in with our healthcare providers, not just our behavioral health providers, but our, our primary care providers, doing prevention education, and then also making sure we're engaging with new community partners, and leaning really into our faith-based agencies as well as our school system. So, overall funding strategies, when we put together these recommendations, we wanted to make sure that we're leveraging our state, local, and federal dollars. We know that thirty-one million dollars is a lot of money, but it's not sufficient, so we wanted to make sure we have federal dollars coming in to the Health Department as well as other agencies, and so we're working in tandem with other federal projects, that we're continuing to support and build momentum for projects that are already being implemented, supporting both Option A and Option B strategies this time, and making sure that we're leaning into these multi-sector partnerships that include our substance use providers, our community-based agencies, and then continuing some of those twenty twenty-two recommendations around our, our capital improvement projects, including a treatment facility that's inpatient. So, we put together some recommendations that would be implemented in twenty twenty-five through twenty twenty-nine. Again, you, the Commissioners have already approved a little more than two million dollars of our sort of, what I call our twenty twenty-two recommendations. Those projects are currently in progress. We're recommending eight point, eight point, eight million dollars, a little more, in new funding recommendations. And then, before you today, you have a local spending authorization resolution that is three-point-two million dollars. And I'll, as we go through, I'll talk about the difference in those dollar amounts. The local spending authorization requires that we know who the money is going to, what particular agency, and some of our recommendations, we need to do a little bit more work through an RFP process about who the money is going to. So, the first recommendation is a Option A strategy, collaborative strategic planning. We could not do the work that we're doing without our Cumberland Fayetteville Opioid Response Team. These dollars, we're recommending five hundred thousand dollars here over this twenty-five to twenty-nine period. That would allow us to support our C-Fort Coordinator, our planning meetings. So, and Quest Graham, who's in the back, raise your hand, is our local public health administrator, and serves as our, is our opioids, response, our opioid settlement coordinator for our county, and she and I both serve on some statewide and some national committees that require us to go to meetings as part of our dollars. So, we are recommending salary and staff time to support collaborative strategic planning. Prevention education, this is an Option B strategy, so, again, Option B requires that you do strategic planning, which we just talked a little bit through, and this part requires approval from the state. So, we're recommending four hundred and fifty thousand dollars in this area. You'll remember, the ARP committee already approved dollars to help us do education in our middle schools and high schools. After the ARP dollars end, these opioid settlement dollars would pick up the, pick up the cost of that, so we would hire a public health educator and a peer support specialist, and we're working with our school district now to get some of these services implemented. The next recommendation is about community-based projects. This has been one of the bright spots and successes of our first round of dollars. We issued a RFP process to fund several pilot projects in twenty twenty-two. This would continue that RFP process, so we're recommending four million dollars that would go towards several Option A strategies, including recovery support services, early intervention, evidence-based addiction treatment. We would issue the RFP process in twenty twenty-five, and they would begin implementation in a four-year cycle from twenty twenty-six to twenty twenty-nine. Our current projects are set to end in twenty, at the, at the latter part of twenty twenty-five, so this would pick up where those projects left off. We are upping the, the funding cycle, because it aligns with our federal projects that are often longer and allow for more sustainability. We would award five projects up to eight hundred thousand dollars per project, and we would require joint applications between our healthcare providers and a community-based partner, and then we would also require service delivery at our Recovery Resource Center. So, this is one that you'll see the dollar difference. You won't see this in our local spending authorization today, because we have to do the RFP process first in order to put it in the spending resolution, but we're asking for approval to move forward with the RFP process. The next strategy is recovery housing support. This is an Option A strategy, five hundred thousand dollars. We had some federal dollars that provided transitional housing for, for folks that are in recovery or seeking recovery. That federal funding ended in September the thirtieth, and it was really successful. We housed over a hundred and twenty-one people, and so, this would continue that, that project in order to provide short-term housing, support rental, Oxford House Utility Assistance for individuals that are exiting or entering, or about to enter treatment. Naloxone distribution, this is an Option A strategy, we're recommending five hundred thousand dollars. We have multiple pickup points in, in the community, including at our detention center, at the Health Department, and then at our Recovery Center, and then we all, our team is also out in the community doing distribution, and this aligns with a federal grant that we were just awarded that allows for training for naloxone that we are hiring staff for right now.
That, Green, and when we own the naloxone. Dr. Green, and on the naloxone distribution, you know, I brought up what Wake County did with, I ain't gonna use the tiny houses, the tiny lab areas, because that, people get confused. But those distribution ports for those, is that going to be included in this right here that we were talking about?
Yes.
Because we know some of the areas that the overdoses are happening, and we just need them out there in those facilities. So is that going to be included in that?
Yes. So we are actually doing a little, we have one that is coming, it's not in stock yet, at our recovery center that, it looks like a newspaper box.
Right.
So we'll have naloxone in there, and so we are sort of testing that one out, and then we'll, I know what you're talking about, the-
Yes. We're gonna call it newspaper box.
Yeah.
I don't want them getting confused and looking for anybody.
No, no, no. So we are actually putting one at the recovery center. That one's on order now, and then we'll, we will look at other places around the, the community, so it allows for 24-hour access.
Right, that's right.
The Recovery Resource Center, thank you commissioners for your support on this. We opened that, we are in week three of our Recovery Resource Center. We've served, we've had folks come in both weeks, and partners are in full support. They're providing recovery report, support services, connection to housing. We have three Health Department staff that staffed that facility. So we are asking and recommending $804,000 to continue that project, and then also expanding our Uber Health program to that facility as well, and then supplies and materials.
And I would tell you that since the Recovery Resource Center opened, I got, it's been open two weeks, but I got three calls from providers who said, well, this is really not going to work, we're not sure. But then they said, this was just awesome. They love what you're doing, Mr. Green. They just love what you're doing over there, and they are pleased with what's happening.
Yeah, I think people just needed to see it.
Right.
And so people have come, we have lots of new partners that, since we've opened our doors, have said, we really want to provide services there. And so it's really been a great opportunity for us to connect people to services. The next one is support for Family Drug Treatment Court. This one is in progress. They're in pilot mode now. It's $400,000 to support their Family Drug Treatment Coordinator. This one, you're not going to see in the resolution today because we really want to hear more from them after their pilot about which option A strategies, whether it's they need more support for housing or transportation to go, to go there. So we're making a recommendation, but we want, we need a little bit more detail to figure out which strategy specifically. Medication opioid use disorder, this is at our detention center. This is our Healing Within Program, recommending $500,000 here for, to support the program at the detention center that has launched about a year ago. We staff a peer support specialist there that's supported by the settlement dollars. And then the Health Department has a licensed clinical social worker that works at our detention center in collaboration. So it really is a joint partnership, and then we work with our jail health provider as well to provide the actual services. And then the last-
Hold on, we'll second.
Yes.
The jail, the jail health thing, we have the Noxalent, and we have this program in jail health. You know, one of the problems we've always had at the detention center is the detainees get excellent care while they're there.
Yes.
But as soon as they're released, I remember that the sheriff told me one time that they have a 91% recidivism rate that comes back to the, so it's pretty obvious that they may be getting this support while they're in, in the, while they're being detained, but as soon as they get back out, they fall into their own ways. Do any of these option A allow for assistance, caseworkers if you will, to prevent them from getting back? They've got to be getting back on the-
Yes, so that, you are exactly right. So these two folks work at the detention center. They work with this program, so they'll be able to identify those folks, and then I'll go back. They make a handoff to our peer support specialist that works at the Recovery Resource Center. So we have a peer support there. So the intent and idea is that we know you, we know your name and phone number. When you exit, we have a warm handoff to our peer support specialist there. And then, you queued this up perfectly for me, for transportation to our treatment facilities. So one of the things that we've heard from in our jail health committee is exactly what you just said, and that people are treatment-ready when they leave. We have a captured audience, they've been on MOUD, but now they get out and they don't have a, they need inpatient treatment, but they don't have a way to get there because those are offered outside of Cumberland County. So this last strategy would offer transportation for them to be able to get to that facility. Most of the facilities have some programs that will help pay for it, but it is the getting them there. So this will allow transportation to reduce that barrier. So that shows up in a couple of different places. And then one of the-
I got one question here from Commissioner Stewart.
Yes, go.
Where is the trend, where is the out of Cumberland County facilities at?
There's one where we primarily see people go, Walter B. Jones, and then there's one in Wilmington, so that people are going, so those are inpatient treatment facilities. That's what we're lacking here. So that was one of our 2022 recommendations, is to work on bringing that here. We're not ready to bring that recommendation forth because we are still in the planning process with one of our subcommittees to kind of think through what that's going to look like.
Last week, I visited a recovery center in Parkton. Ron Bar's Recovery Center. And it had the beds and, and everything, staff, everything. It's a phenomenal place. You should definitely go and look at it, but it's not far. And I wondered if that was a place that you were sending them, because it's, they're, they're ready for people, and I think they finished every, well, I wonder if that was one of the places you were going to be sending them.
Um, we-
It's, it's, yeah, rehab.
Drug rehab?
Yeah.
Okay.
Detox rooms, absolutely, everything that you would need. Humongous, I forgot how many beds, maybe 75, 85 beds. It's the Ron Bar's Recovery Center in Parkton.
So one of the things that the, the, we work with Well Path and our other treatment providers, if they have to go out of the patient, is to really, out of county, is to look at what that person needs and what kind of recovery support services that they need, and then they'll get them to that, that location. I'm not familiar with that one.
They're, they're probably just opening-
Okay. So, but they could. I think this would, this last option really leaves open to go to any of those kind of inpatient treatment facilities where there's not capacity here locally, then we could get them to somewhere else where they need to go, and then bring them back to our community, and then get them to the recovery center. So really having this built-in support for across the spectrum. So that's, so again, in summary, we're requesting approval of these new funding recommendations, just over $8 million, and then, and approval for the local spending authorization resolution, which is 3.2 million, and recommending that get put on the consent agenda for the budget ordinance and the local spending authorization. When we, once we award the RFP, we'll be back in front of you again to actually make the, the actual award and to do the resolution for some of those other ones. But we're recommending it go on the consent agenda for Monday.
One moment. Commissioner Jones.
I just want to make sure I heard correctly. I know that, we don't have one now, but you said we are looking into possibility of a treatment center, so there's the, you all are making leadway, I guess, in finding out what needs to be done. Is that correct?
Yes, so we had two long-term project recommendations from 2022. One was the recovery center, and then one was a treatment facility to identify what that might look like. So now that we've implemented the recovery center, we're going to switch gears and start looking at what does inpatient treatment look like. That's the only option A strategy that allows capital improvement dollars. So it's going to take a little bit more to put that project together because we will likely have to build something, buy something, more than, we already have the space for the recovery center, already identified that was a county building. So it's going to take a little bit more time for us to kind of put together the exact recommendation.
Okay, thanks.
Yes.
So I guess I would ask Dr. Green, how much, well, if you know, how much money does that leave us?
Oh, I, so, you didn't ask me, if I could do the math quickly in my head. So we have eight and 10, so we still have about $20 million. And then-
There's a new settlement coming.
There, just, you're, yep. So we still, this does include, include the Kroger settlement.
Oh, okay, right.
We don't have those dollars in hand yet, but it does include the Kroger settlement. And then there's an additional settlement, additional settlement that is coming. And we have, do not have word yet on when those dollars are coming, but we'll be back before you and those do come to accept that recommendation.
And so, and you may and may not know, so out of when those settlement dollars come, 85% of these original dollars came to counties and municipalities. Are they looking at that on the next ram of settlement that comes?
Tentatively, yes. That is my understanding. St. Quest is going to her coordinator's meeting next Tuesday, so we'll get a more firm answer on that. But my understanding is that those dollars will still be governed by the memorandum of agreement.
Right, because we had to sign a new one anyway.
Yes.
I think we just signed the new one.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. Anybody else have any other questions?
I've got one question.
Yes, sir.
Or a comment. Are you done?
Yes, I'm done.
Okay. Well, I didn't want you to not have a question for me.
Oh, yes, I was waiting. I was waiting.
We've had the opioid settlement dollars for, by the way, thank you for option B. I mean, I know I pushed it for really, really hard, and I appreciate you going forward with that.
Thank you.
What is, what is the statewide trend for opioid overdose? Because we've had this about a year, year and a half. I know the programs take a little while. At one time, we saw opioid use tapering down, but still high.
Yes.
What is, what is it doing now?
You described it perfectly. So our numbers in Cumberland are coming down in terms of the number of emergency department visits and the number of overdose deaths. We still are higher than the state level, but our numbers have declined over the last year for our annual data. And then in our C-Fort meetings, we review the data, our year-to-date data. So every month, year-to-date, we've been, had fewer overdoses and fewer emergency department visits than the year prior. So I'm certainly trending in the right direction, but, but work to do, right? Because we are higher than the state overall.
And I know that we'd love to say that it's a result of all this, but is the reality that there are different drugs out there, or is phen, is fentanyl considered in all of this?
Yes. So fentanyl is, yes.
And how about the other narcotics that are coming out now, the crank and?
So fentanyl is certainly here, and then xylazine is the other drug that we often talk about that is, we know is in our drug supply and is a, is an animal tranquilizer, but is just really-
Noxalent won't even touch it, right?
Well, you, we still want people to use naloxone, so even if somebody has used, or used xylazine and they, we still want them, because fentanyl is also in everything, we still want people to use naloxone. So we don't want them to not use it because, because the person has also taken xylazine.
Is that drug included in our numbers too?
So we don't have, oh, I don't have my, my data slides up here. We, when we track that, we can track if we know at the hospital what, if xylazine is, was consumed. But when we look at our overall overdose numbers, we're primarily looking at, when we, when I present the data, we're primarily tracking opioid use data. But we can get other overdose data as well.
Okay. Well, thank you for all the work you've had to do things in Cumberland County that most people haven't had to do in their whole career in the last couple of years, so.
Well, thank you for, yeah, thank you. You know, we really, we're excited about the prevention part and making sure that that was a strong recommendation in our overall kind of process here.
Commissioner Keith, I'll tell you, talking to the Harm Reduction Committee in C-Fort, and you saw the handoff from the jail, and you know, this, this board helped with the paramedic out of Cape Town Valley, which is another part of this. But what, because I think it really works is because what they, the Harm Reduction told you beforehand, before we started doing this warm handoff with our peer support, is they were going to jail. But when they came out, no, there were new drugs that were different, that was a mixture which sent people into overdose. So when you get them out and you give them that peer support to get them over to the recovery, and then in the treatment, then they don't get back out on the street to be able to try that, because they think they're still trying the exact same thing.
Right.
I think the Harm Reduction works. I think the Recovery Center works. And I would tell you, we've got a very strong recovery group in, in, in Cumberland County. Those folks are awesome. They are always out doing things. C-Fort, I would be remiss if I didn't thank C-Fort for all they do. They meet, what, monthly?
Yes.
Ooh, yeah, they, and-
You get a lot of emails from us, thank you.
Yeah, I do get a lot of emails. That's quite all right.
To your point, Mr. Chair, a lot of these kids take medication, it's Lacerfentanyl, they don't even know it.
Right.
They think they're taking something else.
Yes.
Yes. And we even actually went to, I think we, we did where we got the new test, which would pick up the fentanyl and marijuana and all of that for people to know, because they didn't know that was from, we got that, we got that from Goldsboro, whoever the judge was over there, because that's an updated test that we had to do. So I think all of these strategies together is why, I know it may be trending down, but I think all of this works, the trend down, with all of us are involved in that and doing that. I don't know if you were going to say something more?
No, we do, at the Recovery Center, have fentanyl test strips and xylazine test strips as well that people can pick up as well as naloxone. So, and then I should say two many, many thanks to C-Fort for supporting the work, and we, of course, always invite people to be a part of those meetings. Our next one is on Tuesday at 10:00 a.m.
Yep.
And if there's something else.
So if I can get a motion for the, the use of the opioid settlement funds in the local spending authorization resolution?
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And then if I can get a motion for the associated grant project budget ordinance amendment, B.R. 251250.
Commissioner, we need it to be a budget ordinance and not a, sorry, not a grant project budget ordinance, but a budget ordinance.
Well, that's what it says.
I know, that's not my, that's my fault. We go back and forth, I'm sorry about that.
Okay, go ahead. Say, it's a-
Local spending authorization resolution and associated-
Grant.
Budget project.
Budget project, okay.
Yes, thank you. Deborah is giving me the eye back there, so I appreciate it.
She give me the eye all the time.
Yes.
She give me the eye all the time, so it doesn't matter. I'm glad you got it this time and not, not I, so. If I get a motion for that?
Motion taken.
Is there a second? It's been moved to second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
And that will go to the consent agenda. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners.
That's the, takes us to the Community Development Modular Construction Replacement Policy. And I call on the manager.
Yes, so Todd Volk, Chief of Staff and Interim Community Development Director, and Cedric Turner, County at-Night Intern, will present this item and answer any questions you may have.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
So today, I wanted to come before you and ask you for your consideration of extension of a policy at Community Development. We have internal policy with Community Development for our Housing Rehab Program called the Community Development Modular Construction Replacement Policy. In the past, the department has elected not to take on certain replacement projects due to a lack of cost effectiveness and all-around lack of options allowed under our programming. And today, I have with me, as the manager said, Cedric Turner, who's our intern. He's going to briefly talk about the purpose and the main points behind the policy. And I want to turn over Cedric, because I've been talking about this since April, and he overheard me talking about it, and he started writing. And so I want to give him his opportunity to talk about this policy.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I would like to take a moment to talk about everything with the modular construction replacement policy. The Community Development Department oversees a housing rehab program to ensure single-family homes meet safety standards within the pose health or safety risks. Historically, we have provided deferred forgivable loans covering up to 80% of a home's post-rehab equity due to unnecessary repairs.
Just a second. They can't hear that. They, they can't hear, these old people. Just slow down. Take a deep breath. Over this way. I pointed that way. I pointed that way. Slow down and take a deep breath.
Yes, sir, yes, sir. I'm so-
Not my butt. I won't blame it on myself, man. You're doing an excellent job.
Excellent job.
Thank you.
Slow down, just, there's no rush.
Yes, sir.
Except for the other people. You take all the time you want.
That's right.
In cases where the cost of repair is comparable to replacement, we may recommend replacing the home. This could be with a modular or a suitable, a stick-built home provided to project fit within the allowable equity of threshold. What this means is if the construction coordinator of Community Development assesses a home and has seen that the cost of cure is more than the market value of the home, the MCR policy will actually take forth and allow the construction coordinator to step in and use the policy to further assess that the needs of replacing a home. What that means is if you have a modular built home, and it's more accessible for you to get a stick-built home, because the cost of cure exceeds your market value, and it's more cost effective to replace the home instead of trying to rebuild everything inside the home, this policy will help you in that aspect.
Mr. Keith loving you already. Commissioner Keith is smiling over there loving you already.
I'm gonna test him a minute.
Go on.
Okay, so when this assessment is made, it's made by the, the construction manager or the contractor?
Yes, sir. The construction coordinator.
Yeah. And so, is there a threshold of where they, so a lot of these houses you're having to work with, they're, they're in the lower, lower amount, so in construction costs have skyrocketed, so.
Yes, sir.
It's very easy to go, is there a percentage that you look at, if it's over forty percent of the value of the house, or some other number? Does that kind of tip things over to say, okay, we're not gonna invest in this house because it's, it's not going to increase the value of it at all?
Yes, sir. The way we were looking at it is actually that if you originally owned a modular home, which was, let's say, a two-bedroom, we were not gonna put you in a stick-built home with, that is five-bedroom, that is obviously over exceeding what you originally had owned previously.
Right.
So, we're gonna do a transfer where it's more accessible for, if you're a modular home that is two-bedroom, we'll put you in a stick-built home that is also a two-bedroom.
The question was, if you had an eighty thousand dollar home, and your construction manager comes in and says, hey, it's gonna cost fifty thousand dollars to do this, do you move forward with the project, or do you, where's the tipping point?
So, typically with the housing rehab program, we do up to eighty percent of the home's equity, and so, of course, there's a homeowner. And so, I'll give you an example, I think, I'll allude to what Cedric was talking about. You may have a situation where there's a, let's say it's a three-bedroom home, right? And we're able to, because of the cost of the repair, we're able to then, instead of renovating that home, because the cost of cure is so much, we may be able to potentially demolish the home, put you into a modular home that maybe have two bedrooms, for example. We had a situation a little while ago where a contractor actually offered to do this, we didn't have a framework for it, and what they were gonna do basically was take the existing footprint, which I believe was somewhere around, around fifteen, fifteen hundred square feet, and then build eleven hundred square foot house, and it would have accommodated the individual. We didn't have a program or a framework around that to do that at the time.
Thank you. Thank you. Key components for going into this is actually the homeowner must own both the land as well as the home that it resides on. They must agree to a fifteen-year loan performance repayment period. The construction coordinator will verify the need, and the request will therefore be brought approved authority by the Community Development Director, as well as the county manager, as well as the Board of Commissioners. The replacement of homes will meet HUD's minimum property standards and local codes. Community Development will work to find suitable homes using county resources and redevelopment programs, ensuring compatibility with property. Thank you.
See, you must have heard me earlier today when I was on Mr. Vaughn about these houses. I'll tell you what, you were listening and answered, answered those questions.
And before I go, I just want to say again that I really appreciate Cedric spearheading this, because, like I said, I just talk at the office all the time, and I'm like, we should do this, we should do this. And I don't know if you guys noticed with him, his notebook, he takes copious notes on everything, and he will regurgitate what I said back to me and then show it with a policy, and so, he's really getting that regard.
Well, I keep calling you, then.
Well, and I want to give him his credit too. He's a, he's a Fayette State graduate, and he'll be graduating his master's degree next month.
Great, good press.
Commissioner Stewart?
Cedric, I want to say you did a phenomenal job, and I want to drop the mic for you, 'cause I, I'm leaving you standing. So, I can drop the mic for you, 'cause you did a phenomenal job. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was for you, Jimmy.
Any other questions? If not, I will take a motion to, for the modular construction replacement policy.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
That is unanimous, removed to the consent agenda. Thank you both so very much. Thank you, Cedric. And he is with our internship program, and so, thank you.
Is he gonna do the job afterwards?
Good job. That's above my pay grade, that's over there. Purchase of a fork, I gotta pay, I, you know, there's, there's a, there's a hierarchy here. Purchase of a fork truck for the solid waste department. I was up there the other day, with my shredding on Tuesday. Yes, my shredding on Tuesday.
Okay, good.
They know me by name.
So, Solid Waste did a, what do we call it, a fork truck, but it's a dumpster transporter. And the lowest bid was in the amount of one hundred fifty-eight thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars received from Lilly International. We use this for transporting dumpsters for garbage and recycling. We maintain over seventy dumpsters for those purposes. We're asking that the board approve the purchase of the truck, or put this on the consent agenda, to approve the purchase of the truck, and authorize the chairman to execute the contract that has been pre-audited and determined to be legally sufficient.
Anybody have any questions? I would just tell you, Amanda, that the changes y'all made up there to be able to get in and out are tremendous. I just wanted to thank you, made it easy to be able, now that exit, no, I ain't figured that exit out yet, I was going the wrong way the other day, I didn't know which way, but we need a couple more times for the exit, but no. And I've heard from some people who, some of the trash haulers, that they like the changes that are up there, you're doing an excellent job at the landfill, I just wanted to let you know that. If I can get a motion for the purchase of the fork truck for the solid waste department?
Commissioner, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All righty, thank you. The purchase of the land for the industrial sites, that was from the Fayette, Cumberland County Economic Development, we talked about that. Is there any questions as to that? If not, I'll take a motion for the purchase of the land for the industrial sites. Is there a second? It's been moved to second, all those in favor? All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, there does need to be, in that, in that matter, a budget approval.
Well, you can put that on there, see, I'll put that on there.
So.
Budget amendment?
For, in the amount of one million eight hundred fifty-four thousand, six hundred dollars to appropriate from the capital investment fund balance.
And the, and the number would be B R.
Yeah, B R.
B R twenty-five, zero, two, seven, three.
No, it's two-five, zero, three, nine, nine.
Do it again.
Well, you changed it up on.
Two-five, zero, three, nine, nine.
Three, nine, nine, okay.
Next one's yours.
Okay. Oh, the next one's, you on the wrong one, slow down. That's the Bushy Lake, I didn't know that one, now. All right, so if I can get a motion with that budget amendment?
So moved.
Second. It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, thank you. The next one is the land purchase for the Bubba, Bushy Lake State Natural Area, this is the one out in Beaver Dam, we had already, we discussed that, and it was in agreement for that. We had to bring it back because they were working on the, the contract for, if I can get a mo, and what's that? I'm gonna go to, what's that?
I'm gonna let Deborah say it.
I am.
Number B, two-five, zero, two, seven, three.
Two-five, zero, two.
Seven, three, not to see, two hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars.
All righty.
Taking it from the capital investment fund.
Right. And the last one, we'll move to the consent agenda, and that takes this one from the CIP also. If I can get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Is that second? It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
It's unanimous. All right, the next one is the appropriation of funds to the Cumberland County Hospital System. This is the one we talked about, to establish a one million dollar scholarship for the medical school, as we, we always learn. And thank you for the county attorney, he told me we just can't do things. As a county and a creation of a state, you have to do it in a, in a particular manner. The hospital association, we all serve on that board, it was a county entity, so we prepared a resolution. We eventually want to put it with, hopefully, somewhere else, but it will go into an endowment. Off of that endowment, it would pay off scholarships. We do know that the medical school, and having talked to hospital and then Methodist, the medical school's a private school, tuition's gonna be somewhat high, and so, for those that are marginally distressed and all of those, these funds, we'll be able to use it for Cumberland County, people in Cumberland County, and for Methodist, and from Fayette State University. So, if I can get a motion to establish the new health program, the, the funds to Cumberland County Hospital System Incorporated to establish a new health program, as authorized by G S one fifty-three A, one forty-nine, C fifteen.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right. The next is, and we'll move that to the consent agenda, the next is the grant of the new lease to Cumberland County Community that came to you, but this is just a resolution to put it on, it won't be voted on, because we've got to put it in the newspaper as of our intent to do that. The contract is, was sent to you. Anyone have any questions as to the contract? If not, I'll take a motion to do the resolution of intent, which has to be published, this will come back December the sixteenth for the vote actually on the lease.
So moved.
Second.
All right, it's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, and that will go to the senate, you're over here. I'm sorry. All right, so, whoever else might want this. So, the last one was, we went to M., which is the Hillside Cemetery. Let me tell you, I have been approached by some folks out at, out in Spring Lake, and for the board's indication, this is a, this is kind of interesting. This is a cemetery that sits behind Williams Chapel, it's right there on eighty-seven, the highway came through, they did some things. One point, Spring Lake had it, Spring Lake didn't want it. Two churches, Bethel and Williams Chapel said, we'll take it. Now Bethel is kind of saddled with it, and they have that perpetual care. I'm not asking for, and I hope y'all don't do, that we take over the cemetery. We already got one, we don't want any perpetual care forever and ever. However. And Dr. Green left me too. I can't believe she left. But anyway, I did ask her. So, Jimmy, this is kind of interesting. Back in, when we did, they, from the article and talking to the people, Hurricane Florence, and the Little River actually went over its bounds, and we were out in the back, and that's when the dam for Moore County was about to break, and we were out in the rain, knocking on doors to get people out. Evidently, it unearthed when it came through here, this is right below, right next almost to the Little River when it comes down. If you remember, there was a auto parts store right there, Riverview, Riverview, which is over on, actually on eighty-seven, those coffins kind of came out and they floated around, but whoever had that cemetery was able to do this. Bethel's a small church, so they have an unhearthened casket that's about to come out of the ground, Sunday they're trying to raise funds, but I think this is one where we, as a county, ought to step in, and so, for health reasons, if anything else. And at least for this casket is to retune it so that somebody's family member and all of those would be able to have, to be able to do that. Now, you would probably ask me what the cost is, I don't know, I would just ask that we instruct the manager and staff to, to do that, move forward. Nobody wants one of their loved ones, and I don't know if the person is still here or not, to be floating around out in Spring Lake.
Kind of find another term.
Mr. Chair, with, you know, I know that they've closed out a number of these disaster programs, but this was obviously a result.
Well, they say it is, I guess you have to prove it, but, but to your, to your, to your, I guess where you go, I did talk to Mike Gibson, he says it might be, and that's why I said we, we authorize the manager to do it from our funds and seek reimbursement, or to see if we can get some of those hurricanes, because those hurricane funds are still out there. But in the meantime, because it seems to be such a emergency, is to do it and then seek reimbursement for it. I just don't think that, I don't know how much it costs, I, I embarrassed anybody, but...
Is it just one, you say?
It's just one that's, that's coming up out of the ground.
So, there's no likelihood of any others?
Well, not at this point, but, but that's on them to do the perpetual care of the cemetery.
Right, but I'm just saying if there's one that, this is.
You thinking somebody else might have signed?
No, I'm just saying if there's one that's about to come up that, you know.
But, yeah.
That's, yeah, so, I mean, it would just make sense to, if you're gonna do it, to just do it.
It's a large subject.
Yeah, but this would seem to be the only one, and this might be at the back end or whatever, because if you look at the picture.
Is it that one?
They said it's coming out pretty quickly, if you read the article there, I can't, I ain't been out there to look at it. But, and I think that the staff can assess that and see what it is. I will tell you, it's been going on for a little bit. They're having, I know they're having a fundraiser at Bethel on Sunday, but I was at a gala just the other day, and they brought it up to me again the other day. It's right behind Williams Chapel, and I think that, you know, as a county, that the least we can do is make sure that that's the, now, we do have, and I don't know, I don't know what they do, we do have a cemetery commission, and I don't know who's on that, but, because we still take care of one cemetery, we have one perpetual care cemetery that we take care of. I know the city has several, and, because I was talking to Mike Gibson, that they mow and do all of that. We don't want to take over a cemetery, because I don't think that that's what we want to do with taxpayer dollars. But for this one instance, I would ask that we instruct staff to, to, to do this.
So.
What are you asking them to do, really?
I think they just want to re-bury this in another spot or.
Asking them to fund the, are you asking?
Yeah, to fund it.
What if it comes out to a hundred thousand?
Well, I think they will come back now, I think they, they know what it is, you can.
Fund about eight thousand, dig a hole. I don't mean it like that. I don't mean it like that.
You got on him about using the.
No, no. Dig a hole, I said, leave the grave.
Because they have to dig to be able to put it in the ground. So, that's what I'm saying, it's only, you know.
It looks like there's some erosion issues going on.
Well, that's at the back.
It could very easily get very expensive.
Well, I'm not looking to take care of the erosion and all that, it's, I think they wanted to make sure that, as this came out of the ground, to put it in another spot in the cemetery.
There has to be.
So, we can go, yeah, I mean, you know, no more than fifteen thousand, Jimmy, if we put a, a tape on that. So, if I can get a motion that we would do that up to fifteen thousand, allow the manager and staff, and we can, we can seek reimbursement from the hurricane funds that we do that, if I can get a motion.
So moved.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
That's unanimous, move that to the consent agenda, I think they should be happy. We have closed session?
Yes.
A motion to, you saw the reports, get a motion to go into closed session for Attorney Client Privilege one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A three.
First motion, second.
It's been moved to second, all those in favor? That is unanimous, I give a few minutes for us to go into closed session. We'd like to thank the three new commissioners for attending, if you want to. If you want to...
Three?
And thank you. We came out of closed session, we're back in open session. If I can get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been moved to second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
All right, we are adjourned. Thank you so very much, everybody.